...number of users affected to distinguish it from a mere and statutorily permissible dead spot. Indeed, federal regulations contemplate that areas enjoying adequate coverage will still include spots without reliable coverage. Dead spots are defined as small areas within a service area where the field strength is lower than the minimum level for reliable service, and the presence of dead spots does not mean that service is per se inadequate. And here's a critical, very critical series of maps, which may have been glossed over as the applicant failed to provide the ability to perform an overlay despite being asked to do so several times by Mr. Graef. This is AT&amp;T's drive test done on May 10th. It says May 12th at the top on the basis that the maps were submitted by SAI on that date. This is on the UMTS cellular frequency band, the 800 frequency. It was done in full leaf-on conditions. Let me say that again, full leaf-on conditions, no question that the trees had leaves on them. And based upon more stringent bins, the original bins that Graef had asked for rounded to 75, there was 75, 85, 95, 105. AT&amp;T standards according to Mr. Lawton are neg 74, neg 82. That's it, no more discussion, 72, sorry, 74 and neg 82. We've heard for months that the drive test is the gold standard for measurement. I want you to notice all the roads in the areas where Global has suggested that AT&amp;T has a significant gap in coverage. Look at the roads for a second. These roads, they show up as green, best coverage available, minus 74. Look down Otis, it goes up, turns a little yellow, green, yellow. We've got green all the way along this road here on Downer. We've got green on Bel Air, we've got green over here on Wampe Tuck, we've got green as we go on 3A, right, I'm sorry, Broadco Road. Turns yellow, green, we've got green again, and then back to green. It's green and yellow, this is the drive test. This is the gold standard what we're talking about. It's the UMTS cellular frequency, but it's the drive test. And everything is green and yellow with the exception of some dead spots. And we don't know, we don't know as neighbors because we've never been given the bins, 74, 82. Are those black dots on the map 83, 84, 85? Or are they 110? We don't know. We do know that that's the drive test that was submitted, and we believe it's more than adequate coverage when you look at it. Welcome to New England Topography, ladies and gentlemen. That's what we're looking at. There are dead spots in Crow Point, maybe the result of topography. Now let's see SAI's calculated coverage, what that looks like. This is a propagation map of what SAI says the current coverage looks like without the new proposed tower on. And again, this is only a model. This is some yellow, there is some yellow in the area where they suggest the significant gap exists, but the majority is comprised of white, which represents signal strength below 82 dBMs. We assume that the white represents the alleged significant gap in coverage. Now let's take a look at the first map, the drive test map that we just showed you laid over this map, the second map, the calculated coverage. This is a very easy exercise done with an inexpensive piece of software. Here we compare actual coverage from the drive test to the calculated coverage from the propagation map so as to verify the accuracy of the propagation. It's very revealing. Let's take a look at the results. It seems that the model doesn't hold up too well. The propagation maps look or appear to be suspect. Where green, the best signal shows up on the roadways, and let me take a peek at that. Green, the best signal shows up on the roadways. Look at the underlying propagation there, it's yellow. Look over here. Green on this roadway, the underlying propagation is yellow. Green on this roadway, the underlying propagation is yellow. Why is there a difference between the two? Does it make any sense? One's the drive test, the other one's AT&amp;T's modeling, it's their modeling. It's not done on scientific principle or scientific evidence, it's a model. Look down over here where the yellow roads are. We've got a yellow road here, we've got Downer at yellow with a couple of black spots. We've got some on Otis. Look behind the yellow where the yellow roads are. What do we see? We see white, it's not adequate coverage. They say it's not adequate when it's white. But look at the roadways that go over the areas that are white. They're either yellow or green. Doesn't make sense to us. Something is wrong, something is foul. We can only surmise that the propagation maps were done conservatively, perhaps to suit a need. Propagation maps are mere modeling using different variables, and therefore they are subject, as Michael will tell you, to inaccuracy and sometimes differentiation. I bet if we took 10 RF engineers and put them in a room, each with a different software program, there would be 10 different propagations that you would see. As can easily be seen though, the actual signal strength is better in most cases than the applicant's propagation map evidence would otherwise seem to indicate. We undertook the same exercise on the first drive test presented by SAI, and we came to the exact same conclusion. It's a little disconcerting, we think so. I can tell you that Tom Brady's bride looks a heck of a lot better in Victoria's Secrets lingerie than does my Aunt Gloria. What really matters is the underlying variables, there's no question about that. This was an easy exercise, taking no more again than free software package to overlay two images. Why was the unwilling, why was the applicant unwilling to do this to satisfy this request? To us, the drive test which shows that the roads essentially meet AT&amp;T's coverage standards and which were completed under full leaf-on conditions should have put an end to the discussion on whether or not a significant gap exists. Let's talk about the coverage objective. It's AT&amp;T's objective they tell us to have minus 74 and neg 82 signal strength now on the 1900 frequency. Not only on the 800, the cellular frequency, they want it on the 1900 frequency. All things equal, given limited clutter, flat topography, and this would seem to imply the need for an antenna about every .73 miles, the distance between the smokestack and the shipyard, the proposed site. I'm sorry, the smokestack at the shipyard and the proposed site. Is this a reasonable objective? Here's a map that might, what might be required to fill the need for 72, I'm sorry, 74, 82 at the 1900 frequency. This is Hingham. As many as 52 personal wireless service facilities may be needed to provide a blanket coverage to Hingham at .73 miles apart. Understandable perhaps in a dense environment, but certainly not in a suburb like Hingham. As we suggested, the applicant has implied that their coverage objective is minus 74, minus 82 at the 1900 frequency. And again, we believe this to be unreasonable and likely impossible to achieve on a local, much less a national basis. And even if it was deemed to be reasonable, the proposed tower doesn't even serve the purpose. Here's proposed coverage at the 1900 frequency with Anchor Plaza turned on. This demonstrates number one. Remember when Shane Eagleson said that the new tower at 120 feet will cover 98% of AT&amp;T's coverage gap? Well, it doesn't at 1900. The new coverage does not even reach the search dot. This is where they told us they were looking. This is the search dot. The yellow or green at 1900 doesn't even reach the search dot. Number two, much of the new coverage area is comprised of open space and of low-density development. Do you see the rings in here in red? We're talking about places like the Foster School grounds, there's 39 acres over there. Most of it is just raw land or trees, fields. It's the Welch care, Welch healthcare facilities, a lot of open space, a couple of buildings. Bradley Woods Field is there. Hewitt's Cove Conservation gets some coverage. There's other conservation areas behind the Anchor Plaza. Privately owned land which we'll share with you later on Planters Field Road. And there's privately owned wetlands behind, as I said, the Anchor Plaza parcel. And let's not forget that the new coverage also includes the area where we live, where we're opposed to it. We don't want coverage at 1900, we're fine where we are. Let's move on. I want to tell you that we had a couple of other individuals that were going to present this evening, and unfortunately they are, had conflicts and a couple of them are out of town. So we're going to move past a couple of these probably less important points in an opportunity to get this moving around, moving along quicker. We want to talk quickly about the applicant's evidence and the credibility issues. The question we've asked before is can we trust the propagation modeling? And our answer is no. Mr. Eagleson was dismissed summarily from the proceedings. We don't know whether AT&amp;T would still vouch for his testimony. We'd like an answer to that. We've told you before that AT&amp;T or Global failed to produce an accurate map showing planned or existing wireless service facilities for the next 24 months. And there's been an issue, and I don't think we're going to go into it too deeply tonight, but an issue with one of the individuals who have, who was presented for AT&amp;T where the educational background, the degree that was stated in the open meeting is different than what was submitted to the board on a basis, on a different basis. The degree was not the same degree. So let's move on. I want to go into now about some evidence of adequate coverage. This is now us working. Let's take a peek at this map. This was taken directly off an AT&amp;T website. And we're going to give you some evidence to the contrary that demonstrates the coverage is not only adequate, but perhaps better than adequate. Let's start with AT&amp;T's marketing maps. It shows best coverage, best, look down here. We've got best coverage, dark orange is best coverage. This is the Crow Point area. We've got dark orange, best, almost the entire way through. Look at that. We also have good in the areas, it's a little bit of a triangle shape that comes down from Lincoln Street into Crow Point, and that's suggested to be good on their own maps. I think we've shown you where the Foster School is on the site, and that's an open space area that's comprised some of the good area. Who made these maps is the question. We assume that the maps were made by the same radio frequency engineers that presumably are working with SAI on the application. It shows the strength of a signal for carriers, coverage in this area. While there may be some smoothing involved because we're looking from a high level. And a disclaimer on their website about the reliability of this information, it looks pretty darn good to us, doesn't it to you? We don't see a significant gap anywhere. And don't be quick to dismiss this information board despite what the applicant may say. If we can't rely on these maps, then why should we be asked to rely on anything else that Global presents? It seems to us that Global and their co-applicants should be held to the same standard for claims of coverage, whether they're being made to the public to help sell services or to us as a municipality. Here's a little chat that was done. "I live on Jarvis Avenue in Hingham, Mass. and am considering the purchase of a voice and data plan from AT&amp;T. I've looked at the coverage maps on your website and need some clarification. Will I be able to get reliable service in my house?" I'll be more than happy to help you with that coverage question today. Let me check this for you, thank you. "You will have the best coverage for GLTD. How does AT&amp;T rate the coverage for voice and data in the general area of my home? It'll be best, good, moderate, and partner. For voice, you have the best." Thank you, you're welcome, happy holidays. Thank you for choosing AT&amp;T." That's what they say on their website when you ask the question about coverage in our area. Let's move on if I can to Route Metrics because we want to speed this up if we can. As you know, we discovered an independent company who does network testing. The company is known as Route Metrics. Some of this information was presented to you at last meeting. Here's a screenshot of a recent AT&amp;T online advertisement which uses Route Metrics findings to entice prospective customers. This is to note that AT&amp;T is aware of Route Metrics and uses it in their marketing efforts. We're going to review quickly the background from their website. However, it might be just in the, in an opportunity to move this along, this is in your packets, so I don't think you have to be, to be made aware, but the board had asked us for some detail and we provided it. "They're guided by two standards, testing mobile network performance from a consumer's point of view and providing an objective unbiased assessment of performance in helpful and easy to understand terms." We'll keep going, there's the methodology for you. And we want to go into see the nuts and bolts to this. The entire area of Crow Point and Otis Hill and Squirrel Hill, the entire area is marked good. Each hex on the map represents a test area. In the online map, a click on each hex brings up the average DBM recorded and the number of data points which were collected. You can see that a good portion of the adjacent areas are not populated with results. This would suggest that what we are claiming is reasonably accurate. For the most part, with the exception of Route 3, we believe it was the neighbors who provided the field test which helped produce these results. 3A was probably done by the neighbors, but it was also done by people just driving on 3A. Oh, Route 3A, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. Here's a map which was produced on July 11th, and it's tough to get in there. I wish I had been able to zoom in for you to show you the numbers. Each hex contains two numbers, the first is the DBM strength and the latter is the number of data points which Route Metrics has collected. Backup data via screenshot is available if you'd like us to provide it to you, Earl, or to the board. Remember, we believe the numbers need to be adjusted to compensate for in-vehicle attenuation of 5, minus 5 to minus 8 dBm, which number was provided to us by Mr. Lawton as being reasonable. You'll see the results are very favorable, and there are only a few pockets where the numbers fall a bit shy of achieving AT&amp;T's coverage objective. Let's continue for a second. "For demonstration purposes, we conducted some additional Route Metrics testing on the very next day, July 12th. And we used this time a newer phone, a Samsung Galaxy S4. We believe that a good percentage of our earlier Route Metrics testing was completed using the iPhone 4S." "We also recorded the on-screen signal strength captured during the testing to be able to analyze how each new test impacted the DBM reported in the hex. The maps shown here reflect the before and after hex data that appear in the Route Metrics online coverage map." Just try over here, let's pick that one out, 89. There's 89 with 27 different data points. So the next day we went out and did this work, and it dropped to 86. And you can see the number of data points went from 27 to 42. What does all that mean? For what it's worth, we provided a chart, and you can look at this at your leisure. And it shows before the hex data, before hex data, the DBM that was reported in the app as each test cycle completed, and the after hex data. I want you to know that Route Metrics applies a greater weight to newer data points so that the map reflects a greater look at current conditions. It's certainly not a straight average. Ultimately, the new phone for us achieved a much better signal. The minus 93 with 105 data points became minus 89 with 123 data points. So I guess we query as the technology changes and the better phones are brought aboard, we're wondering if the strength of the signals are going to get better as well. Let's move on if I can to Turkey Hill and some unreliable signals. The applicant claims that Turkey Hill doesn't serve this area. That's what we heard. Here's an email from Liz Thompson dated July 2nd, 2014. She says, "The coverage from this site was considered in the plots that we provided to the town," referring to Turkey Hill. "But since Turkey Hill is roughly 1.6 miles to the east of the church site, the coverage is far too removed from the coverage gap to show up on the plots. The coverage from Turkey Hill does not change the significant gap in coverage identified in the area where the proposed facility sits. The coverage does not change, is not changed by Turkey Hill." We also suggest that, the applicant also suggests to us that a great percentage of signals which are coming from unknown locations, do you remember this meeting, last meeting? Signals coming from unknown locations across the bay, from Winthrop, from Dorchester, from Quincy, from Marblehead, from Nova Scotia for all we know, these are signals that are unreliable. They're scrambled, you don't know where they're coming from. We don't know where they're coming from is what we heard. Well, we disagree with both assertions. Here's a photograph of Turkey Hill, the tower, it was taken from Downer Avenue just northeast of Otis Street. Given the fact that this is a line-of-sight technology that we're dealing with and that signals do travel across the water, we know that, it makes sense that Turkey Hill would provide a significant service to the area despite its distance. As you can see, the Turkey Hill tower is quite visible from Downer. Let's continue. What did we do? We decided to go out and get an application. The application's called RF Signal Tracker. We use an Android phone, and we're able to demonstrate that Turkey Hill does indeed provide significant service in the area. Let me tell you a little bit about RF Tracker Signal Device. It's on your Android phone, it's a very simple program. You can, you can look and see on this program what tower you are connected to. On an Android phone, on the viewfinder, you can see where you were connected. And you can watch as the signals are handed off to the next tower. So we go driving the route from tower to tower. Most of the time, I would suggest to you, in Crow Point, Otis Hill, we are on the smokestack tower. How do we know? We see a cell ID number and an LAC number, cell ID, LAC. We don't know what they mean, we're not RF frequency engineers. But I can tell you something, we can drive our car up to the smokestack and drive around the smokestack and see it change. The cell ID and the LAC numbers change. Each sector has an LAC and a cell ID number. These are proprietary numbers to AT&amp;T, to Sprint, to T-Mobile. How do we find out? We know, it goes from that cell ID, LAC, and we go around the tower, and of course it's going to the next one. So we're able to tell you where the tower is, where the signal's coming from on that Android phone. We also drive underneath the Turkey Hill antenna, the tower, and we see it. One, drive around to another side, two, three. We know there are three different sectors in the Turkey Hill. We also drove to First Baptist Church, and sure enough, cell ID different on three different sides. So now we've been able to find, independent of any professional advice, we've been able to find at least nine sectors and three different towers. Mr. Lawton is indeed correct about one thing. There are a lot of signals, a lot of different towers, a lot of antennas impacting the end of Crow Point. But I think he said that the entire area on the end of Crow Point is affected, and these signals are corrupted, and we don't know where they're coming from. I can provide Mr. Lawton the cell IDs and the LICs, and if he was able to take that information. We believe that those signals may be coming from Hull, not too far away. Not as local as what they would particularly like. They're not as local as the shipyard, and they're certainly not as local as Turkey Hill, but we believe that they could be identified. If we can do this work as laypeople, we think that the applicant should have been able to do that. Let's go. We have something for the applicant and for the board on the RF Tracker application that's in your packages if you'd like to read that at some point. So when we ran the RF Signal Tracker application on several occasions, we proved, oh, so we drove a pre-established drive route throughout Crow Point as well as sections of Thaxter Street and Lincoln Street and the Bradley Park neighborhood. And the app indeed captured the signal and the cell ID data. And then that information was downloaded into an Excel spreadsheet. Having already identified the three local cell sites, we were able to analyze this data and summarize it for you. Note, some of the roads on the drive route were driven twice, such as with dead ends. And this includes roads served by local cell IDs as well as some of those unknown cell IDs. While there's some duplication in the roads driven, the data presented depicts a fairly accurate representation of serving cell and signal strength. Before you glaze over, let me try to give you some of these stats. And Joan, if you'd like to help at any time on this information, would be great. We believe that 30% of our area is served by Turkey Hill, 30%. Those are the data points we received. 90% of the area is served by the shipyard or Turkey Hill. So we took the combined numbers of Turkey Hill and the shipyard, and it's 90%. The remaining 10% is not concentrated in one area, although we have a belief, we never have been able to check it out, but we believe that certain signals are coming from Hull, not so far away. And this 10% is in the northern area. It's limited, it's limited to the northern area of Crow Point along the water, where the proposed 800 megahertz service does not reach. It doesn't get there. So if the point of AT&amp;T is to make sure that those signals that are contaminated in some way are not contaminated any longer, and they pick up the signal from the Anchor Plaza spot, they won't. They're too far away, it doesn't get there. This proves Mr. Lawton's assertion that a major portion of Crow Point is being serviced by non-local towers. Let's move on. "This chart reports the number of data points captured by the level of the signal strength. There is always some concern about what signal strength we have. The numbers reported at each level include all the data points that are equal to or better than that signal level. In other words, you cannot add the buckets. On average, 98% of the signals that we captured meet the criteria stated by SAI as the AT&amp;T's signal objective. That is, in vehicle, the phone received a signal of minus 90 dBm or better. The phone was located in a cup holder in the vehicle, so presumably would receive an even better signal if it was in the hand of a vehicle operator and potentially closer to a window." Look at that when you have a few minutes, please. "Since the application RF Tracker captures the latitude and longitude of the mobile device for each data point, we're also able to identify the general areas that may receive signals from cell IDs other than Turkey Hill or the shipyard. This map demonstrates the results from the RF Tracker test data collected on July 2nd. Note on the overlay map that new coverage from the proposed site, as we've told you before, at 800 megahertz, shown in light green, that's 800 megahertz, new coverage from the site at Anchor Plaza, does not reach, as we said before, any of the non-local served areas identified in a data collection on July 2nd. Look at the areas marked in red up here. These are the areas we're talking about. These are the areas where there's some issues, as Mr. Lawton has indicated, they don't know where the signals are coming from. We do know that the signals all along here, and all along here, come from Turkey Hill. But up here, we're not particularly sure. And even if this tower is built, the propagation that they show does not reach the area down here. So we wonder if this site would have any impact on what's presently happening in terms of handoffs to what Mr. Lawton believes are non-local sites." And there's one more slide here. Here's a map of RF Tracker application that shows where the handoffs occur based on the data collected for each data point. It's confusing. The application maps the The application maps the data based on the latitude and longitude of the mobile device captured for each data point and as the dots remain the same color, the app is tracking a signal from the same site. And as the color changes from either purple to blue, or I guess pink to blue, or blue to pink, it's an indicator that there has been a handoff to another site. We were able to visually identify where the handoffs were occurring and then refer to the raw data for the LAC cell ID of the handoff cell and identify if it was either Turkey Hill or the smokestack or an unknown antenna." This is how we identified the areas circled in red on the previous map. Let me go into something that's very interesting. We decided to take into our own hands some testing. What if I was to tell you, as a board, if I told you that you could make a straight drive from Hingham to Jacksonville, Florida, which would take you about 17 and a half hours, maybe 18 and a half hours with a few well-timed bathroom breaks, and you could talk to me via cellphone the entire time you're driving? Eighteen and a half hours talking to me on a cellphone while you're driving? I don't think you could. That's good. Oh, I forgot. One time, there's one time we get disconnected. One time, that's it. So essentially, you can drive for 18 and a half hours and you can talk the whole way. We stay connected except for that one drop call. Would you then consider AT&amp;T's service reliable along that corridor? That's not a rhetorical question. I'd venture to say that the resounding response would be yes. The drive test would certainly be conclusive evidence of such a finding. Well, that's essentially what we did. Let's look at the next slide. "We conducted 20 drive tests, 20 drive tests, approximately one hour each throughout the area where we believe Global has alleged that AT&amp;T has the significant gap. Continuous call drive tests, call placed at the beginning of a drive route and retained throughout the area." Again, there's 20 drive tests that were conducted at peak travel times, AM and PM. All test drives covered the same areas in question. Seventeen test drives followed the same route sequence, except as noted when roads were inaccessible due to road or tree work. Total miles driven per test about 19. Total time for each continuous call that was made about one hour. Some were less, some were a little more. The results. Nineteen successful continuous calls throughout the drive route, 19, representing approximately 1,115 minutes or about 18 and a half hours of call connection. One dropped call. And at that time, the battery power had been reduced to about 27%. We don't know if that had an impact on the drop. We'd like to submit to you tonight three affidavits. I think we've already done that. One from each of Joan Nevins and Lawrence Malone and one from myself relating to the test. Mrs. Nevins's affidavit contains the call log and we're happy to read each affidavit into the record if need be. I assume that you don't want that tonight. "Each call was digitally recorded using a Sony PJ970, I think it's a 790, video camera, so that there's a permanent record of this, these drives. If necessary, we're happy to provide copies of the files upon request and we could do it either to the applicant, to the board, or to both. The video will show the map of the route driven in real time on, at an Apple iPhone S4, Apple iPhone S4? I4? S4? Via an Apple Mac application. And the audio from the sources depended upon which landline was dialed. Sometimes you'll hear an audiobook, sometimes you'll hear a, a sports radio show." Well, what does this data support? One drop call. One drop call in 18 and a half hours of continuous driving. It demonstrates that the service in the alleged gap is more than adequate. Mr. Lawton noted in the most reading, oh, here we go, nope, different one. Here's the, here's the drive test map that was done. "As you can see, we painstakingly covered almost every road in the area. We even crossed Route, oh, sorry, Lincoln Street into, into the Bradley, Bradley Woods, no Bradley Hill Road area, Bradley Hill area. The results were very favorable and served to prove that the gap alleged by Global does not exist. And these drive tests were done in the last several weeks, which is during full leaf-on season." We also completed some additional testing we want to share. "As you folks know, the network is only as good as its ability to handle calls. The applicant suggests that the 1900 frequency is only to offload capacity in support of the network." And this is a quote or an affidavit from Mr. Eagleson which suggests that. "Generally, when a network reaches its full capacity, calls are then bounced. They can't get through. Callers are not able to place the call successfully and either receive a busy signal or a verbal error message to the effect that all circuits are busy." Has anyone ever gotten one of those? "Please try your call again later. It's likely that more calls are being made and/or received during peak drive times." And I think the industry standard is called the bouncing busy hour. We don't know what AT&amp;T's bouncy busy hour is for this particular area, but we made some, some guesses. So to test the network, we selected 10 sites from which to make calls. This was done to see if there were problems accessing the network at certain times, which then we considered as peak and to determine where the calls could be made from certain areas where AT&amp;T claims the service is unreliable. Eight of the 10 sites are locations where the applicant, according to their existing coverage propagation maps, claimed there's no present PCS coverage. So they don't have 1900 coverage in eight of the 10 areas we chose and we chose those areas for a reason. If capacity was an issue on this network at this time, calls would likely bounce during the busy bouncing hour and be denied access to the network during peak drive times. And if there was a significant gap in coverage, if there was a significant gap in their coverage, the call wouldn't even be able to be executed. We're going to submit affidavits to you tonight, or we already have, one from Lawrence Malone and one from myself, which describes the procedure we used and contains the call log records. If necessary, I'm happy again to read the affidavits into the record. "Approximately 600 phone calls were successfully made over a five-day period during what we considered as peak driving hours. The drivers, Mr. Malone and myself, used a Samsung Galaxy S4 phone on the AT&amp;T network. All of Mr. Malone's calls were successfully completed, each and every one. You will note that my experience was very similar. However, the very first call that I made from the intersection of Bradley Woods Drive and Bayberry on July 10th did not go through. It may have been a bounced call, a problem with the phone, or perhaps a network issue. So we obtained and a recorded announcement matrix from AT&amp;T and are submitting the same again with you for your review. The message I received on that call leads me to believe that the reason the call didn't go through had nothing to do with system congestion. And even if one call was a bounced call, the percentage it would represent, .0016 percent of total calls, .0016. In our book, that's hardly material and, and doesn't constitute any significance whatsoever. In addition, the success rate of these calls, 600, nearly 600 calls, it's our contention that there is no gap in coverage." Let me move on quickly to calculated coverage in December of 2010. And we ask a question here. Is there a smoking gun? In December of 2010, and bear with me, folks, because this is important stuff. In December of 2010, AT&amp;T filed an application for a stealth personal wireless service facility to be located in the steeple at New North Church. New North Church is about a mile, maybe a mile and a quarter, maybe a mile and a half from the Anchor Plaza site and it's right next to St. Paul's. They filed an application in December of 2010. At that time, they submitted propagation maps showing calculated coverage in Hingham and adjacent areas. There it is. These are very interesting. We don't know which frequency they were calculated at and we have assumed that these were made at UMTS frequency, the 800 frequency, as the related application in 2010 for New North Church was a UMTS application. For the record, there's an affidavit from the RF engineer who happened to be an employee at AT&amp;T, Joe Beard Mariano, and his name and this propagation also was referred to in correspondence from Mr. Lawton that was put forth several weeks ago. Look at these maps for a second. They show approximately 95%, maybe more. Crow Point, Otis Hill, Squirrel Hill has coverage at minus 74 dBm and the few small pockets, minus 82. And they're out on the end of Crow Point. So here's the area we're talking about over here. This is Crow Point, Otis Hill, down here. And we're talking minus 74, minus 82. This is current coverage, 2010, New North application propagation. It doesn't include the signal from the New North Church either, which location was approved, but the installation was never completed. This is pretty amazing stuff. More than adequate coverage. Certainly, there's, there's significant coverage and it's all in the gap that they say exists today. Yep. Yep.
Is that orange in the kind of upper left-hand corner? That looks like it's near the shipyard? No, no, left, right there.
That is the shipyard antenna.
And we've got minus 104?
No, that's green. I'm talking green over here, that's 74.
No, I know, but with the orange, I want to...
I think that's the way that they have identified the tower with, with the three sectors and they just use three different colors. I don't think that has anything to do with coverage.
Okay.
And if I move on, in January of 2011, now we're talking about those propagation maps in 2010 in December. We moved to 11 in January, a couple of months later, and AT&amp;T files an application with the ZBA to put three new panel antennas at the shipyard tower, 130 feet. This appears to have been a relocation of the equipment they had, 186 feet, and an addition of the LTE service. We've talked about this before, but I think it's important to bring it up again. This is the site plan which reads, and I, existing, and up here, up here, there's the antennas they had. And that right there, you can't read it from where you sit, but I'll tell you what it reads. Existing antennas, this is on the shipyard antenna, the shipyard smokestack, existing antennas, AT antennas, AT&amp;T antennas and appurtenances to be relocated to 130 feet. So they're coming down from 186 to 130. In 2010, they propagated and showed perfect coverage. They were at 186 feet. Now they're coming down to 130 feet. Here's where they were. Here's where they're going, or where they are today. There's a difference of over 55 feet. Despite being asked for, for an explanation of the propagation maps and of the situation back on January 1st by Mr. Graef, Global did not respond until the last meeting. Mr. Lawton's indicated that 15 years ago, AT&amp;T moved from their position at in excess of 200 feet down to 186 feet. That would be an impossible feat because the tower has never been over 200 feet. The maximum it's ever been is 186. The smokestack is 186 feet. It was never over 200. Mr. Lawton indicated that, that the tower was moved from over 200 feet down to 186. This begs an important question. If AT&amp;T was broadcasting the UMTS signal from 186 feet in 2010 and produced propagation maps which showed more than adequate signal strength from that location to cover all of Crow Point and the surrounding areas, then what's changed? Either the maps from 2010 are inaccurate or done at conceivably a, a different frequency. Which ones are to we, we to believe? And if we are, if we, as we suspect, Mr. Lawton's assertion is wrong, well, let's move on for a second. It, it's a, it's a nightmare for us to look at this and think that, is it possible that AT&amp;T could just simply go back up to 186 feet where they were and enjoy the same propagation that they had in 2010? That's the question of, of the applicant tonight. Let's talk about the search ring if we can. We've been given three different locations by AT&amp;T personnel or representatives to describe the most optimum site for a personal wireless service facility. Shane Eagleson offered the intersection of Downer and Lincoln at the Gulf Station. Couple of months later, SAI as a board and they offer a search target at the intersection of March Street and Witten Street, Witten Avenue. And then Michael, a couple of weeks ago, offered the Foster Elementary School as the most ideal location. There are no less than three references to AT&amp;T's so-called search ring or search area in the application and there are numerous other references having been made to it throughout these hearings. Despite requested, repeated requests, AT&amp;T's never provided us a search ring. AT&amp;D does customarily provide such a document. And here's what it would look like. This is a search ring that came out of the Woburn application, S2786. If you look on the top left-hand corner, you see the AT&amp;T logo beginning to show. Global told us, "This is how it works," but we've seen no such animal from them despite requests dating back to December. So we're left with reasonably vague descriptions of where the gap exists. This supports our notion again that the tail is wagging the dog. Now let's talk about Global's alternative site analysis. Quite frankly, the vigor at which they conducted the site analysis is suspect. It would seem to us that the sites they included would most definitely, they had to have been located in the so-called search ring. Why would you go out looking for properties outside of your search ring? Doesn't make any sense to me. Seventeen of the 40 sites that they looked at, that are on the papers submitted, were bumped. They weren't any good. Why? Because they were too close to the existing smokestack tower. Why did they even have to look at those unless the sites were in the search ring? Or was this merely window dressing? Say, let's put down as many sites as possible so it looks like we did our job effectively. Let's come up with 40 sites to show these guys. Wouldn't AT&amp;T have known at what distance a tower needed to be from the smokestack? Once that was established, all of the properties at less than that distance could have been quickly excluded. Why did Global use the distance from Anchor Plaza in their sheet to the selected site in their, in their chart? They used the distance from Anchor Plaza to the selected site. Wouldn't it have been more appropriate number to have been the distance from the center of the search ring to the site you were looking at? This implies that the site was selected before the search began, doesn't it? Why is there no written correspondence to the parties they say they have contacted? Would this be a prerequisite to a good search? Assuming that they were really interested in finding the best location to fill whatever gap they allege? Most of us are cold-called every day and we disregard the call or the message. Wouldn't it have been a bit better to have sent a certified letter expressing interest in a parcel, especially when it's the best parcel that you want? So that the owner knows that the outreach is real? Concerned, we're concerned that this was just going through the motions of establishing an alternative site analysis. Please bear with me for one more second. It shows here at the left, the lower left, a red dot which marks 191 Beale Street. No one's ever known or heard about that address. It's not important. It's a site that was considered by AT&amp;T and rejected because it was too close to the But otherwise, it would have filled the gap. It must have been in the search ring to have looked at, we've told you. And it's 1.44 miles away from the so-called search dot. 1.44 miles. Would a signal from this site have reached the search dot? When a signal from the proposed site won't? At least based upon the propagation maps we have seen, it doesn't. And if it would, then shouldn't other sites that far away, 1.44 miles, be considered and be included in the search ring? Let's say like the already-approved site at New North? Why can't we go back there again and take a peek at that propagation? Let me read a statement to you. And I'm going to paraphrase. "If we determine there's a significant gap in coverage, what we need to do," and this is Mr. Duval, "what we need to do is show you that we've done our homework, that we've gone out there and we've taken a look at every site that we could look at in the search ring. Let's keep going on. And I can represent to you, as will this team..." And I can represent to you, as will this team, the site acquisition specialists that will, that can testify as to the document, not me, that we've gone out there and we've looked at all of the alternative locations out there, and we can't find one. We want to find one. We want to find the best location. That's what Earl said. We think this statement's a bit disingenuous, and here's why. Because Michael Lawton claimed that the Foster School is the most ideal site for the tower. He offered that at the recent meeting. "I'd love dearly for this site to be at the school," he said. Can we then agree that Foster is the best location? Attorney Duval says that Global wants to find the best location. It looks like a perfect marriage to me. As you know, a few weeks ago, after discussing the alternative search ring and the assertion by Mr. Lawton about the Foster School, a few neighbors wrote to the school committee. Mr. Estes actually appeared at the last hearing and offered to take the matter up with his committee. He did so at the meeting thereafter, and it appeared as if the committee wanted to hear what Global had to say, but since no contact was made, they decided to table further discussion until after the meeting or until they heard from Global. It's like a bad high school dance. You're at one side of the room, the school's at the other. You won't talk to each other. Global refused to talk to the school committee until a request for proposal was written. That's not essentially how it works. There should be some communication first. We'd love to tell you about Dover Sherborne Regional School System a couple of weeks ago. Their applica, I'm sorry, they had an application in front of the Dover zoning board of appeals, and it was for a site that was very close to the Dover Sherborne High School. And you know what they did? They said, hang on, let's vet that before we continue with our application. Let's hold the hearing open, and we'll go through the process and see if we can locate it in a more advantageous position for not only us, but for the town. We asked Global to try to do the same thing, and they've refused. Alternative site analysis. Let's look at some alternative sites which may not have been fully vetted or perhaps were overlooked in haste. First, I got to tell you about the goal here. Simply not to try and get the tower out of our neighborhood and make it someone else's problem or woe. We understand that it's important that any alternative be advanced. It had to be an option which was less intrusive and would have to provide similar, if not better, coverage to areas where Global has alleged a gap. As an example, this would mean finding a site which was farther away from homes in residential areas. We know that under certain conditions and circumstances, the TCA can preempt zoning regulations, but it can also trump state and local regulations, and I know Mr. Fisher is well aware of this, they can also trump conservation restrictions as well. Here are some prospective sites. Fifty-five Downer, thirty-nine point seven five acres, we talked about, this is the school system. Jackie claims to have proposed a stealth tower for the school or a rooftop antenna. And we've opened the door for Global now, because she was rejected initially by the business manager. And they appear to have no interest in walking through it. It certainly would be a less intrusive site when it comes to the proximity of homes. And our pages run off over here, but I could do these from memory. That was the school tower, the school site. Lincoln Street, Downer Avenue. Let's talk about this site right here. This is called the pumping station. It's probably, it's an institutional site that already exists. If Global was able to redesign its foundation, its base, it's very possible that instead of a square or rectangle could fit on grounds near the pumping station. And again, it may be close to the flood zone or the AE flood zone, but again, that can be overridden if it's at all, if the application is a good one. That would be an ideal site, we think, for a tower. We talked over here, and I can't see it very well, but, John, is that? Next door to the Anchor Plaza, which is farther away from the homes on Tupelo Drive, there's a property. The site analysis indicates that it's owned by a corporation and that they've talked to the corporate owner, and the corporate owner has no interest. Well, it's not owned by a corporation. It's owned by three individuals. I talked to one of those individuals back in October of last year and suggested, hey, do you have interest? Yes, I would have interest if it was financially reasonable to me. That's the words that I heard back. I don't know what happened to that site. It's been fallen off the map. And now it's, he has no interest according to the site analysis that we received. And I'm going to bring you to one more site if I can. John, do we have more? Because I've truncated them a little. Was there another site we wanted to talk about? No. So it's the, we have the possibility of the pumping station over here. We query whether Global even communicated with the sewer commission or the board of selectmen to find out whether they had interest in writing an RFP for that site right here. We talked about the school, and I want you to see the school up here, the ball fields, there's some wetlands on either side, but that tower could very easily slip into this point right here. And it's possible, as Jackie has indicated, it could be a rooftop design or maybe a stealth tower and a pine tree of some sort to match the landscape. We talked to you just against, I think it's two oh three Lincoln Street, and it's the Agro family, three members of the Agro family that own that, and that's next to Anchor Plaza. And there's one more. I got it here. Take a peek at this. Three parcels of wooded land, raw land, with a sizable amount of upland. This is the ANRAD for this parcel. It's zero Planters Field Lane, zero to two Planters Field Lane. This site doesn't show up anywhere. This site was never scrubbed, this site was never looked at by Global. And this site is fifty yards, fifty yards away from the school. They never looked at it. It's right there, it's sitting there, it's a vacant piece of upland. Now, it's owned by the Feely family of Hingham. There's one issue right here. They may have to cross wetlands. Not a big deal. Five thousand square feet of wetlands can be replicated. Not a big issue. Look at the upland over here. This is amazing. There's some ledge, that might be good for a foundation for a tower. I don't know, Jesse, do you know? But if the site was located right here in this section, and again, do we know whether they'll lease it? Do we have any, we have no knowledge about what their interest is. There's the Foster School property. We go down Planters Field, and on the left-hand side, there's massive piece of real estate sitting out here. It's eight acres. It's not like it's been hiding behind a bush. It's eight acres of land. Parcels twenty-one, twenty-one B, twenty-three on map twenty-six. I don't know what happened. Here's a map showing a four hundred and fifty-foot buffer around the potential tower sighting. We're looking at a proposal which would put a facility today less than a hundred feet from a lot line and less than two hundred feet from a home. This is four hundred and fifty feet away from the nearest home. The Planters Field property is well wooded and has several tall trees which would serve to decrease the visibility of any tower structure. We asked Global, has this site ever been propagated? Have the owners been contacted? And if not, why? I don't know. We don't think it's our job to go out and do Global's work. This site should have been scrubbed, and at least an entry in the site analysis should have been included. Let me give you one more thing. Not in my front yard. Here's an interesting thought. If the property owner, John, if John Hajar was the applicant, it's likely that the board would not approve the variances, as it's clearly a less intrusive, feasible site, one that won't require as much zoning relief in terms of the fall zone. So it just so happens to be on John's property. It may be in the middle of his parking lot, but it appears to be feasible. Only that, in this case of Global, it can't be leased. And I certainly understand why John wouldn't want to lease a piece of property in the middle of his parking lot on Route 3A. Locating the tower there would decrease the need for a substantial fall zone variance, however. We don't expect this to ever happen. However, it seems inequitable to us as neighbors that John could simply purchase the tower after it's up and lease, and purchase the leaseback from Global after it's built, and then he supersedes the real intent of the law. Doesn't make sense to us. In any event, we wonder or we query if Mr. Hajar could work with the abutter on the right-hand side looking from this angle, the Agros, to see if that right-hand corner of the property, which would be a less intrusive site, could be used. We're getting late over here, and this is valuation, okay? And there's a lot of things that we've talked about over here. We've hired a review appraiser to look at Mr. LeMay's market study. His name is Bill Pestuzic. We've already presented that information on the record. So I don't think it's worthwhile, but I will tell you this. If you read the letter from Emily, asking Global, asking Liz to do this work or to engage services, it talks about this. We asked the board, consider what effect the facility will have on the value of homes in the general area and specifically on those that will have a direct view of the tower within three hundred and fifty feet. It doesn't seem to me that Mr. LeMay did that job, or maybe it wasn't communicated This is what Mr. LeMay says in his report. "It's our opinion that the proposed tower will have no measurable impact on surrounding residential values due to proximity or visibility. We don't find this in the least bit credible. I've been in the finance and banking business for more than thirty years, and I was appalled to see the inferior quality of the market study report. His standard was upsetting to say the least. The effort was a waste of time and energy and money. More than half of the properties noted in the study were outside of Massachusetts. One was a commercial building, which bears no resemblance to what we're talking about here." One respondent's information contained in the report says that he's enjoying the revenue he got from the tower. Sixteen of eighteen properties had towers which were more, sixteen of eighteen, more than three hundred and fifty feet away from the chosen property. Certainly, he would have had a problem finding comparable sale information, and I certainly respect that. But he does not suggest that. There are a few properties in Massachusetts he could have used which have cell towers in their backyards. We're talking here, sixty-six feet from a residential lot line, less than two hundred feet away from a home. Maybe there just wasn't an effort or time to search them. We've spent hours researching sales in the vicinity of homes cited as having had no impact. We believe Mr. LeMay's talking to the wrong people. The broker has nothing to gain by talking to him. The buyer, who talks to Mr. LeMay and suggests that he didn't have a problem with this at all, it's like asking the guy, hey, did you get a good deal on that rotten apple? What's the response going to be? I didn't really buy a rotten apple. I don't want to hear that. So suffice to say that we believe that the market study was not an effective presentation to determine that values that are three hundred and fifty feet away from our properties. So let's go. We're going to skip over some of these if I can. Let me talk to you real quick, because we need to give you some data. This is evidence of detrimental impact. We decided it might be a good idea to solicit some opinions where the rubber meets the road. And we turned to two brokerage companies, two brokerage houses in Hingham, and asked their brokers to complete a local survey. We offered anonymity to the brokers and took no part in the distribution and collection of individual surveys. We're pleased to offer the combined results and share redacted individual surveys if you'd like. And all thirteen brokers from two companies agreed to take part. There were five questions in all. Two copies of the survey book and a blank copy of the actual survey have been submitted here with for your review. The books were all professionally printed. Here's a quick sample question. Tupelo Drive residents. We showed a photograph of the exterior of the residential dwelling and a photograph with a bird's eye view of the surrounding neighborhood. We showed an existing conditions image of the view from the front yard or the residence or the backyard, depending on the view shed. And then we showed a proposed condition view from Tupelo Drive from the front yard of the same residence. We offered the proposed distances from the front line and from the structure, and then asked the broker to complete the following. "It's my professional opinion that the value of the property as depicted in the proposed condition would be the same, more or less than the value of the property as depicted in the existing condition view." Comments were requested but not, could be, but could not, could be offered, or not requested but could be offered. And each question related to a different property. Thirteen broker responses, five questions. Twelve of thirteen respondents, and this is critical, suggested that the presence of a hundred and twenty-foot tower with three antenna arrays within three hundred and forty-six feet from a home would serve to lessen its value. Twelve of thirteen brokers. Nine of thirteen respondent brokers suggested that the presence of a tower greater than nine hundred and forty-eight feet, on the other hand, from a home, would not have an impact in value. The answers to the questions are shown, and I think they're entitled exhibit. And there's some information we'd like to send. It's part of this package. There's an appraiser by the name of Bond, who you may know, who did a lot of work in New Zealand, which really is outside of our market area, and we're reluctant to submit that. But also, there's some work done in Florida, and for the record, I think that we'd like to put that in.
Those were time-based analyses.
Yeah, some of them have regression analysis too, so it's a...
Of the sites were, rather than providing, I don't know, I think it was nineteen plots, we whittled it down and basically grouped them by area, excuse me. So, other than that, I think the other two things that we provided was we went, we went back and we calculated some more road distances based on the maps that had been provided, and took another look at the question that you had asked about whether, how it didn't make sense. And we did believe that the way we calculated it made sense, and we believe that those numbers are correct. And the third set of plots we did was you asked if we could simulate the coverage it would be provided from the smokestack, and we went into AT&amp;T's tool and ran simulations at various heights, raising the antennas to see at what height it would, and as I said, sort of in my brief statement, it's kind of an inexact analysis because you're looking at propagation from two different places, so it's never going to be exactly the same. We tried to come up with a general guess at what height the site would provide the same footprint as the proposed, at what height a site that could have been located on the smokestack at a higher height would approximate the coverage of the proposed, the proposal site. At eight fifty, I think we got to a height that looked pretty similar. At nineteen hundred, we kept going up, we got to four hundred feet, and in fact, we went up to a thousand feet, and it never, it never provided comparable coverage. And that's because nineteen hundred typically doesn't propagate anywhere near as far, and I think, you know, if you look at nineteen hundred cell spacing, it's going to be closer together by nature, it has to be.
I didn't understand what you said about the eight, the eight hundred.
Yeah, we looked, we did...
I didn't understand what you said. How high did you have to go on the smokestack for the eight hundred to replicate?
I don't remember. It was in the email that I sent. Do you remember, second?
Four hundred feet.
Four hundred feet.
So the tower would have to be four hundred feet high at the shipyard in order to get the same comparable coverage at eight hundred?
Based on the propagation, yeah. I mean, obviously, we've got several different data sets all going here. You know, we did a CW test on the proposed site. We took some measurements in the area. To do a simulation on the smokestack is then, you know, you're, you can't, you almost have to compare the apple to the apple. And to get as precise an answer on the smokestack, at what height the smokestack would need to be, to compare it to the data that we have on the proposed site or on the coverage in the area, to get that precise, that level of precision of an analysis, you would want to do a CW test at variable heights in order to compare the same level of quality of data. But without the ability to do a CW test, and I mean, I'm not even sure how we would do one at four hundred feet, they're typically, it's limited by the height of a crane, and there aren't very many four hundred foot cranes.
At four hundred feet, that's just like...
Yeah, exactly. So that's sort of my, I guess, summary of the responsive information that we provided. And I guess, in terms of a general overall summary, you know, being here representing AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T asked me to come here, and, because AT&amp;T has a need in this area. AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T asked me to come here, and, because AT&amp;T has a need in this area, and AT&amp;T wants this site, because they feel that in order to serve their customers in Hingham and traveling through Hingham, they need to provide this level of coverage. And that's sort of the, the nature of why AT&amp;T is here. I mean, you know, obviously, the idea is not to build things willy-nilly, spend lots of money, and if there was another way to do this for much less money, certainly AT&amp;T would have chosen to do that. We, we're here because it's AT&amp;T's position that, in order to provide coverage in this area, a new site is necessary. AT&amp;T's, and as a result of, through our application, we were asked to do one additional drive test, and then we, in fact, based on some questioning about the church site, why that wasn't included in the first drive test, well, it wasn't actually on the air at that time, we went back and we did a second drive test. And, you know, AT&amp;T is paying for additional data to provide, to prove out the need. The neighbors, obviously, have generated and collected quite a bit of data themselves, but it's AT&amp;T's position that the data that we've provided is sufficient to show the need for the site, show the, show the coverage gap. And as far as whether this is the ideal site, as far as what's been presented to us for review, this is the best site. I was up, maybe not this room, but somewhere else, and I said the church, I'm sorry, not the church, the foster school would be a better alternative. However, that's not been, never been presented. The neighbors found some other alternatives that may or may not be better from various other perspectives, but those aren't things that we've looked at. So, from what we have to look at, which is the list of sites that was presented as the alternative analysis, this is the best site.
Good question. Yeah. How do you reconcile the, the coverage representations that AT&amp;T makes on its website and with its live customer service people in terms of the strength of the signal versus, and those are presumably fact-based representations, how do you reconcile those fact-based representations by AT&amp;T with your analysis?
That's a good question, and a question that comes up at nearly every hearing, because these, these marketing plots are out there. And we, you know, as engineers, we use a tool that's more accurate than what's provided, than what the marketing department is providing. I guess, I don't know if it, if the analogy fits, but one of the ways I've kind of explained it in a joking way is that, you know, if you go out and you buy a car and it can do zero to 60 in five seconds, you don't have to do that all the time. It's capable of it. You know, that's a marketing, nobody's gonna actually do that, right? That's somebody trying to sell a service, and it sells.
When you're talking about coverage, you're talking about performance standards.
Correct.
And there had, sale, does sales mean that you can represent things that aren't fact-based performance standards? I mean, I hope that's not the case.
I think they, they look at a larger bin size, a larger, less, and I think you made reference to that, they look at a more smoothing, less granularity, number one. Number two, they're looking at a 50% probability. As an engineer, we look at 90% probability. So that has a penalty in terms of the signal that you look for. There's a, there's, when you go from 50%, 50% probability to 90% probability, there's a dB adjustment that needs to be made in order to provide that probability, for lack of repeating the same word over and over again, in order to provide that quality of service. And, you know, frankly, as an engineer, we would wish that those weren't on the, on the website, you know, that they, they didn't have that data available to people. But, you know, the, the other thing is that those, as with any plot, you're also looking at something that's trying to represent both outdoors, indoors, in a car, in a basement, on the top floor, all in two dimensions. So there's some variability there. But, but I agree with the, the question. It is a good question. There is a difference between what we as engineers and what AT&amp;T's engineers look at on a daily basis in terms of what, what it takes in order to provide coverage in a certain area versus what we see on the, on the website.
The difference in either the probability or confidence interval that you'll be able to get that signal strength.
Right.
You're using, using a different, a different standard of confidence. And is there a rule of thumb between 50 and 90% what the dB differential is?
There is. I can't recall off the top of my head. The, the tools, the software tool that, Force ATOL that AT&amp;T is using, all those are placed in as constants, along with, you know, path loss models and all sorts of other propagation, different loss figures for different types of clutter. There's, you know, a two-page screen of constants for the site, and you put in the probability that you want, and whether you're looking at a coverage level or an interference level. An interference level would actually be, so 90% is a coverage level, 50% is an average level, and 10% is your interference threshold. So if the, if the, when you look at a, a signal carrier to interference ratio, you compare a 90% probability of coverage to a 10% probability of interference. So it's, it's, whatever that ratio is, is expanded by a margin, and I, and I'm afraid I don't have, I don't, off the top of my head, know those numbers.
Is the concept, it would be something like if the coverage map said dark orange, like that we saw on the screen, and we all might interpret that as being minus 74 dBm, but actually, because it's only at 50%, it was minus 82?
No, when a plot is done, when, when, when a plot is done in those tools, that coverage margin is incorporated within the analysis. So the negative 74 is adjusted for a coverage probability. So it's adjusted, and some of that is where you see the difference in some cases between a drive test and, because the drive test is looking at the average signal level. The root metrics was looking at the average signal level. The propagation analysis is looking at a, at a additional margin on top of that. Is the best way to explain it. But it's not shown in the legend on the plot. It's just sort of the practice of coverage analysis versus interference analysis and the way industry standard calculation is.
Is, and I'm just trying to follow this, so is it fair to say that, that the propagation maps would tend to show less coverage than, than the drive tests?
For a couple of reasons, and that's a sort of a bigger question, because there's also, there's the margin, but there's also, you're, when you do a propagation analysis, it has to be not seasonally dependent, because with full foliage, you're gonna have attenuation from the trees, leaves, everything. With, in the wintertime, we don't have that except if it's evergreen trees. So the variability, you know, there's, and there've been tests done on, in various parts of the country, how much seasonal variability of propagation through tree cover there is, and it's, it's hard to really get a handle on it, because the trees themselves are variable in height and composition, evergreen versus deciduous, what the percentage is. So the, the, when you do a propagation analysis, you have to choose whether you want to look at a winter or a summer, or somewhere in between for a margin of error, either way. Because obviously, what happens with the network is, in, in the wintertime, coverage is better, but interference is more from adjacent sites. Pollution is higher. In the summertime, coverage is weaker, interference gets weaker. So it's, you have to choose a middle ground when you look at it, and the, the tools tend to choose a middle ground. And that's why, and you can see, like, if you really get down to it and look at the two drive tests we did, we did one in May, and we did one in Christmas Eve, on New Year's Eve. And New Year's Eve, obviously, there's no foliage loss, and in May, there's going to be some. Not full, but some.
Did you consider what might be done to the Turkey Hill Tower to perhaps provide additional coverage?
We looked at the Turkey Hill, the Turkey Hill Tower is actually on the other side of the church, and there was a, in one of the emails that I sent. We, I actually, we zoomed out in one of the emails that we sent back via the attorneys to the town, there was a picture, and I'm not sure, I suppose I could dig it out of my email, but... Yes, so...
Would you prefer to see something, like, you want to see something from...
Well, if you go back to the one that had the calls for reading on it, the old plot, because I can show you where Turkey Hill is on that. The other way. No, it's not, it doesn't show on that.
Does it show on you right there?
No, go to the, the plot that you're at, the, the older plot, the prior application. Because I've zoomed out enough that I think you can see where Turkey Hill is.
Okay. It's Turkey Hill, we have it on the map, that's the home map, down low. See the tower right here, the tower down the block right? That's Turkey Hill. Smokestack left, Turkey Hill block right.
I don't think that's right. I believe, I think Turkey Hill is over here. Yeah. So that's the smokestack, that's where the personal attorney town. I believe this is Turkey Hill over here. If I can read that, yes. That's, that's Turkey Hill. So, obviously, the problem with Turkey Hill is that you can see it from here, but in order to provide coverage in here, there's an intervening site at the, at the church.
Yeah.
And that wouldn't be successful coverage. It wouldn't be good network design to try to cover that. And I think the Turkey Hill site is actually quite tall already. I don't recall, but it's a significant tower. We had a picture of it, but it's hard to see how tall that is above the ground. I think I can...
So what I asked is, did you do an analysis to see if anything could...
We did not raise, we did not, we didn't do the same thing. You're asking for a similar...
But you did the smokestack thing, and I didn't know if you did it...
We did not do that at Turkey Hill. No. We, we could, and see what, what, if anything, could be accomplished by raising that. Certainly, that's an analysis that can be done.
I think one thing we asked last hearing, too, was, I think I was a little asked it, can we do a monopole here? And I don't know if you got an answer. Rather than the proposed tower?
I think you're asking, you're asking a question, and we have to think about it from two perspectives, because we, you, we talk about the applicant, but you really have two applicants. From AT&amp;T's perspective, at this point, monopoles or unipoles is the more appropriate term for the, without, without horizontal dimension, are not preferred, and the reason they're not preferred, and in fact are under scrutiny, each one of them, is because of several things. First of all, in order to place the number of antennas that AT&amp;T would need, they would need to, instead of be horizontally separated, they'd need to be vertically separated, so AT&amp;T would be taking up more, a fair bit more vertical space than what they would be horizontally. That's one, one issue. That's a co-location issue.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if the tower was at 120 feet, where AT&amp;T would be at the top, now AT&amp;T, instead of having antennas spaced across at 120 feet, they would want to have antennas spaced downwards, and the next available spot might be 100 feet or lower than that.
Right.
That's the, that's been the historical concern. The more modern concern about these antennas, and again, in some respects, everything we've presented has been UMTS-focused. However, the network is evolving to LTE, and one of the things that happens as the network evolves to LTE is that the, for the higher frequencies, in order to improve noise figure and loss values at a higher frequency, the carriers are trying to move their radio units from traditionally where they'd be in an enclosure at the base, and you'd have coaxial cable going up inside this tower to just a dumb antenna, basically, at the top of the, of the tower. Now what they, now what they're trying to do is, in order to get more coverage for data, move the radio itself, it's a remote radiohead, and they're about, about that big, and put them up on the tower with a very short jumper from the antenna to the radiohead itself. And when you do that, you are able to provide better coverage at higher frequencies. And that becomes a concern, much more so for data and LTE.
Does that, can that concern be addressed through a wider diameter, a unipole, or is it, I mean, it sounds like it's...
Typically, they're pretty big. They don't, you really, and, and they also need some air ventilation, because they're radios, they need to cool themselves through ambient air. So typically, they're not placed inside. What you can, what can be done for LTE is that the radioheads can be placed at the bottom and continually, continue with coax from those radioheads up to the top, but then you've lost the advantage of reducing that cable. And what you have instead of, if you do, if you are able to place the radioheads at the top, instead of having, you know, a larger, typically, the carriers would look for nine to 12 runs of anywhere from seven-eighth inch to inch and five-eighths foam dielectric coaxial cable, each one of them going up the tower, and as you can imagine, it gets larger and larger. If you're able to place the radioheads at the top, what you can do is you can, you just run a DC feeder and a fiber cable. So you've taken something that, you know, if you envision, envision 12 runs of inch and five-eighths, it's something like that, you take it down to a couple strands of fiber and a DC run, and something like that. So it becomes less of a tower-loading issue as well, which can be an issue as you put more and more tower, more and more carriers on a tower. Fiber optic, yeah. So the, so the, the radiohead is fed, there's a controller unit in the, at the base, and there's a fiber connection up to the radiohead. The only two connections to the radiohead are the DC cable and the fiber, and then the radiohead sits very close to the antenna. Typically, the jumpers are four or five feet, no more. So that's the... So that's the, that's how the, the networks are evolving. And I believe that's how most of the carriers are, are trying to evolve their networks. So carriers more and more are hesitant to do a unipole unless it's absolutely required. Now, from a, a site management company perspective, that's a different question. And I think they'd, they'd also look at, fiber is easier to manage than coax. Less, less of their tower is, is being occupied within the structure itself. And as well, less vertical. But if the carrier is willing to pay for that, I imagine the, the, the tower company would be willing to lease it, so.
Is there a gap in LTE coverage now? Or, or do we have in the record that there's that gap in LTE coverage?
We haven't looked at seven hundred megahertz. So LTE, the, the launch frequency at, in this, in, in Boston proper was seven hundred megahertz. And we didn't do any plots for that. Again, I could, I could look at that.
I just didn't see that.
You know, it isn't, because we, the reason, when we took this over from, when I took this over from Shane, the, the plots that had already been on file were UMTS plots. So I just continued along with that. There are applications pending, and in fact, a number of applications that are pending throughout Massachusetts and New England, where the, the, the frequency and the technology is either seven hundred megahertz LTE, nineteen hundred megahertz LTE, depending on what's available in that area.
Do you know if AT&amp;T has any applications pending for, is it a unipole?
Unipole is kind of what people call them now, or, they, they used to call them flagpoles, but.
So does AT&amp;T have any current applications that you're aware of?
I am aware that one was just granted in New Canaan, Connecticut. That was a unipole. And that was very recently, I, I want to say, I think it was within the last month or two. Trying to, give me a minute to think, and I'll see. No, no, I'm trying to think if there were others. Nothing's coming to mind, but I'm really.
I don't have any other questions, gentlemen?
Nope.
Is there anything further? This one, I guess that's it.
No, I think I've, uh, exhausted my.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, yeah, please.
Hi, Jackie Swenson, site acqui- KJK Wireless. And I just wanted to clarify that when we started the process to find the site about a year ago, the Foster School was the first place that we looked. And at that point, we had no idea that GTP was doing something down Lincoln Street. We shifted from interest in Foster School down the street ways to the Yacht Club. And around the same time, that wasn't working out, because we spent quite a deal of time there. GTP came up with the fact that they were doing something down Lincoln Street, looked at that.
GTP?
Global Towers. Yeah, I'm sorry. So just, I mean, it's probably moot point, but I just want to make that clarification that the first place we had interest in was the school. I tried to get before the board, and I was told I had to go through the business manager to do that. And although we didn't have written correspondence, we did have quite a few conversations on the phone. And we were told they had no interest at that time.
How, how did you select the Foster School as the place to start?
Just because it was, it's a heavily, you know, it's densely populated residential area. And it offered a lot of open land where we could maybe put a monopine or something like that that would blend in. So that's why that was the first spot.
What about, Tony Viola mentioned a place across the street from the Foster School, which was, what, about eight acres? Did you look at that?
At, at the time, I don't think that was within the area that I was looking at. And we were trying to get coverage further down the street.
But this is across the street, so it's not.
This was zero planters field.
Well, it's not across the street, but it's behind, I think, isn't it behind, Tony, really?
Planters Field runs perpendicular to Downer, if you will. And it's the first lot, it's actually, some of the parcel is actually on, on Downer. So it's probably about fifty or sixty feet from the Foster.
It's actually right across, right across down.
It's a section of conservation land first, and then it's above the conservation. It just seems strange that it's so close to the school.
Well, conservation land, we would probably, if we saw it's conservation land, we probably stayed away for that reason.
Did you, so that's a good question, did you stay away from conservation land?
We, we normally would, yes, yes.
And the reason you would stay away from conservation land is what?
It's usually frowned upon that we put a tower, and.
What's also frowned to put it in a residential area, so.
It is, I mean, it's a, it's, it's a pretty dense area, though.
So how did you make the correct, the decision that it was okay to be in a residential area, but not okay to be in a conservation area? What, what?
Well, there may have been, I, I'd have to go back and look and see if there were some other, you know, considerations as far as wetlands and that at the time. But I guess my point is that it's a densely populated residential area. We felt that the area around the school was certainly the best area to place a tower. It seemed to offer coverage for our route, I was told. And so that's where we first looked. Then from there, we went down to the Yacht Club. And I guess before we could go much further, knowing that it was very densely populated, we're told about the site down Lincoln Street, which seemed to meet our needs at the time initially. So we looked into it further. And again, if someone is building a tower, then we're certainly not going to try to build a tower if there's one in the area, or there's one being built in the area. So that was an easy choice. So at that point, everything stopped and we shifted.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Ernie DeWolfe, anything, anything further?
Earl DeWolfe, I represent the applicant. I think we've heard an awful lot from a lot of people. We've received a lot of data from AT&amp;T. We've received a lot of data from a lot of hard work from the neighbors. And we've see, received a lot of analysis and data from Mr. Graef, the towns expert. I think that we heard, you know, Mr. Lawton say, and what I would emphasize is that, you know, AT&amp;T believes that it does have, you know, a significant gap in coverage. You've heard that, you know, they wouldn't be here if they didn't think they had this gap in coverage. With regards to alternatives, I would caution the board. There's the City of Cranston case, you might be familiar with Omni Point fee, City of Cranston. And it stands for the premise that, you know, the federal courts impose a reasonable, reasonableness standard with respect to the search for alternative sites, and do not require a wireless provider to expend an endless amount of time or capital to identify alternatives. I think that from the affidavits that were submitted, the Google map that was prepared, the history, the, the search history, that a significant amount of time and effort and energy was in fact made to look at alternative sites. And, you know, I would submit that, you know, the most feasible alternative is the site that's been selected. I heard from, you know, the abutters with regards to state variance standards. And I think the board is familiar with regards to, you know, that's the unique circumstance that if we're able to demonstrate that we have, and you believe that we've demonstrated, that we have a significant gap in coverage, and that we have exhausted our search and found what's the, you know, the only feasible alternative, and that that's a situation in which the board is required to grant a variance. You know, my question to you is, and I, I know we started with regards to the, the issue with the fees, is to whether or not, you know, you believe from the two most recent final reports from Mr. Graef, that you have, you know, all the information that you need, you know, from him to make, you know, determination, you know, on the record. Because as, you know, I had shared last time, you know, I believe that we have, you know, exhausted our resources and shared, you know, with you, you know, from AT&amp;T, you know, RF, you know, what we can to substantiate, you know, the gap. So, without going on and on and on about federal cases and whatnot.
Thanks very much.
So what he's asked is whether or not do we need to have our expert come back or not?
I represent to you that I will follow up with my client once again, you know, tomorrow with regards to the issue of the fees. And your point, of course, is accurate and well taken.
So I think the options are for this evening. Either we can say we've heard enough, and we've gotten the input that we need from the experts and neighbors, close the hearing. Or we can ask the applicant to, to consider an extension to allow us to have the, our expert come back.
We've gotten two reports from him in the past eight days.
Yep.
I guess my question would be, is there anything beyond what's in these reports that he would present if he came back?
I mean, I, my sense is that we've got what we need for the record.
Yep.
Have, have you submitted, have the neighbors submitted what they need? During your presentation, you referenced a lot of information, but in some instances, you said you'll get that to us. And I don't know if you've already gotten it to us, or you thought the record was going to be kept open. Has the information that you've discussed and sort of incorporated by reference, has it actually been provided to this office? Do you know?
The affidavits right there, there were certain pieces of information Tony suggested that if you wanted raw data, like the videos of the drive tests, you can certainly submit those. It's a media gig in size.
Right, I, I would, my, my personal preference is that you not submit them, but we will deem them incorporated by reference, or that is, you'd like to look at them at some point. You can do that, unless you'd like them, put them in right now. Do you have a preference?
Not necessary.
Yeah.
I would argue that, you know, the federal court would not accept that as, you know, reasonable or legitimate or evidence. But, okay.
Well, I mean, there's, there's two issues there. One is whether federal court would accept it, and the second, whether or not it would constitute sufficient basis for this board to make a determination. And there are different evidentiary standards that apply. So I'm comfortable with what.
Can the names give an opinion about?
I'm sorry?
Can the names give an opinion about Mr. Graef?
Can you give, I'm, I'm not understanding what you're.
You were discussing whether or not one of the options might be that Mr. Graef might come back. And I was just wondering whether we could give our opinion on that.
We, we know he can come back, the board needs to make an assessment as to whether or not it's, it's, have they seen all the latest submissions that, that he made?
We received his reports yesterday.
Right, okay.
We think there's certain issues that were discussed in his report that are now on verbally being, being further explained. The four hundred foot theory on the smokestack, for instance. I agree, he just misses out in his report. He presented a couple exhibits that, as much as I know at this point, you know, I wasn't sure. I agree with this conclusion, but, you know, maybe the, the exhibits need to be explained so everybody understands the exercise he was going through.
I think your question was, are we comfortable if you close the record tonight that there isn't further information or testimony that we want to provide?
That you want to provide, yes.
I will say this to you, that certain slides that we have were truncated, and it would be nice if you could pull it open for a day or two, and we'd be happy to get you that testimony in writing if we think it's critical, and it's possible that there's nothing that's really pertinent that we would have to say at this point.
I mean, I, I think what you presented, and not just this evening, but we got in advance, a lot of the presentation was exceptionally well done. Yeah, I mean, if, if we close the record, we, we are not accepting anything further.
Correct.
I guess at this point, we'd be happy to close the record.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I think we should, yeah. I think we've got more than enough data to sift through here, so.
And we certainly have been here for many months.
Many, many hearings, many hearing sessions.
We support that as well.
Right, you're okay? Um, is, is it fair to say that there, there are no, um, there are no pressing or interpretive questions that we feel we need Ron Graef's response to? The, um, do you have any, Emily, or is there any? No? All right. Then I think we're, yeah, right, I think we're kind of comfortable closing.
In, in terms of what's owed, then that needs to be addressed?
It would be nice if you could pay him. It's approximately two thousand dollars.
And that's not for any, not, we're not talking about coming to a future hearing, this is up until, till now.
This is cover, work through his reports, so, yeah.
It's approximately two thousand. It's less than we had requested, because we anticipated having to pay him to travel here.
So we need to?
That may go over better with my client.
That's good news.
What would be our procedure if that money is not forthcoming?
We would continue to ask for it. There's, you know, I, I don't know that we have experience with an applicant not paying a peer review invoice.
That's a good question.
They're obligated to pay it, there'd be no building permits issued, I mean, there's, there's other ways of holding it up later.
Well, I'm not looking to hold it up later, I'm, I think we need to get this addressed. And in, in my view, that would be a basis for denial of the application in itself. If, if the, just like an application fee, if that's not paid, we, we just can't proceed. So I think, even though we can close the record, if it turns out that it is not paid, that will be part of our record in terms of making a decision on this.
Right.
So what, what is your timing, you think, on finding out from your client?
It's American Tower, it's a pretty big company, so.
Okay, I know you can't make representation at this point.
I, I think we've, I mean, we've paid, you know, over twelve thousand dollars so far, and I've been able to get that money out of my client. And I shared with them the requested information, I would share with them the, you know, the new balance owed based upon the fact that he didn't appear tonight. And advocate your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, so we'll close the hearing. Do we need a motion for that?
Well, we do, but before we do, just so the applicant understands, once we close it, it would be my expectation that we would have a subsequent hearing where we actual, actually do debate and go over things. And once we close it, you would not be able to provide input. And some applicants say, please don't close, we want to be able to have a give and take later on. I just want to make sure that you're comfortable not having that, or you want to think about it and you do want to have it. So. I just want to make sure that you're comfortable not having that, or you want to think about it and you do want to have it, just so.
Closing the hearing.
Okay, all right.
So I move, one second, we've got, Joe, we have someone who's-
Am I allowed to ask a clarifying?
Yes, please, you may, please do.
Just identify yourself for the record.
I need to, I'm sorry, but you got to come all the way up to the microphone since we're recording this.
Well, you could project your voice really now.
And we just need your name and address.
My name's Leanne Turnak, and I live at 5 Tupelo Drive. I just wanted to understand that, like, last month, we were here, and the meeting stated that we were all going to come together when the other RF engineer could be present. So I don't understand that because the applicant wasn't willing to pay ahead of time, then he wasn't allowed to be here. And so any questions you had for the applicant, the AT&amp;T gentleman answered on behalf of AT&amp;T is biased. I mean, he's being paid by AT&amp;T versus our representation from the unbiased RF engineer is not here. So I just don't understand why, the fairness in that, that, you know, you're not being equally-
It wasn't, it wasn't, we asked him not to come because we didn't want him to expend some additional funds that he might not get reimbursed for. We didn't think that was fair. It's not like we, we don't have input from him. We've got his reports, that we've got that.
But it was originally scheduled, but, but once they told you no, they weren't going to pay, then his plans got canceled, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So I, I, I think, I think simple answer is, we feel that we've gotten that input from him. I mean, maybe not verbally in person.
With anything that was said by him, nobody else was able, you know, we've, all these people have been trying to research and trying to understand, but yet if you had a qualified individual here, could rebuttal to anything that he presented tonight.
Well, that's why, right, I think he, I mean, most of the stuff we heard this evening was submitted prior to this hearing.
Right.
And our engineer had an opportunity to review that, that's part of his report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just, just to follow, if we had heard something this evening that was quite original and not based on items that we'd heard before, I would share your concern.
Correct.
But I don't think that's what happened this evening.
That's correct.
If I may, I just want to clarify that I did not say that we weren't going to pay.
Right, absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
Understood, thank you.
Understood. Okay.
Anyone else before we-
Anyone else? Last chance.
So we have a motion, I'll second that motion.
So I, I move that we close the hearing. Before, again, let's confirm the dates.
Right.
So we have presently on record, the deadline for local action on the application is August 29th.
Which means that's when we have to issue our-
So we have to file a decision.
With the town clerk. So you'll have to meet at least a couple days in advance on that. Yeah. Okay.
Ask the chair.
I'm sorry? Please, yes.
Joan Evans, 9 Tupelo Drive. I don't doubt that AT&amp;T would expend any amount of time, money, energy, resources to get ubiquitous coverage throughout Crow Point, throughout Hingham. However, that does not afford AT&amp;T what they want, protection under TCA. There's a burden to prove a significant gap in coverage. And AT&amp;T can believe, you know, whatever they want. I'll tell you that I'm an AT&amp;T customer, I probably won't be after today. So they're down one customer. And I just wanted to remind everybody, you know, what, why we are here. We are here only because of protection under TCA. And there's a need to prove a significant gap in coverage, and that the site selected solves that gap. There's several pieces of information that we provided that demonstrates that the specific areas that you have focused on as being an issue are not even reached by this tower, by this location. So this, this site does not serve that second purpose, which is, you know, the site serves that alleged gap. So I just wanted to make those couple of points to remind everybody. We heard from the very beginning, we wouldn't be here if AT&amp;T didn't think they needed a tower. And I'm sure AT&amp;T wants green dots throughout all of Hingham. However, that does not allow AT&amp;T to put a cell tower in my backyard. Thank you.
Okay, I now move to close the hearing.
Second, there's a motion, it's been seconded, all in favor. Aye, okay.
So, so let's get some dates.
Twenty ninth needs to be filed.
So.
Do you have meetings already? July 28th, it's a Monday, which is relatively full and very soon. And August 13th, otherwise you're unscheduled. You have one August 13th.
Who's that?
Oh. It's a big meeting.
Was that?
With continued hearing dates.
We, we should meet.
And you have the 20th, Joe.
That was a new one. I, I, I had a meeting rescheduled.